Five, six, seven, wow. The crowd. Evening. The town council starts this way and we were at a meeting of the Carroll County Planning Commission. And they started with the Pledge of Allegiance and then I realized that's probably not a bad idea. So. He's got a flag?
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
So, welcome to the October twenty-seventh meeting of the New Windsor Planning Commission. First order of business is approval of the nine twenty-two, twenty-five minutes. I wasn't at the meeting, but I did have an adjustment that I asked Dana to make based on some of the feedback I had gotten. Uh, so she did send a revision out and I assume everybody had a chance to see it. So, could I get a motion to accept the minutes of the nine twenty-two meeting? So, the motion from Kevin and seconded by Dave Grayson, all in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, seven zero. And as always, we work off of an agenda based on information that I get from the town manager or from the community. And not get any notice, we've got a couple of updates. Uh, there was a meeting that we went to, we'll mention, but in general, it's just gonna be continuing with the review of the plan. And I will add that there had been some urgency from Springdale to meet when we did several months ago. It was three months ago, so about four months ago, they wanted to get on our agenda and after that meeting when the archi- or the, the bell, no, what were they?
The architect and the civil engineer. Well, the other was the civil engineer.
Engineer, that's the word I was looking for. They, uh, we've not heard anything from them. So, I'll let you know if we do hear anything and of course, if they need to be on the agenda, that we will so do. Okay, so the first item on here is town council updates from Dave.
Yep, couple of things I'll bring up. You may have heard or seen through our past meetings that the town council decided to purchase an eighteen-foot Christmas tree for our park up here. The, um, you're gonna, it's a beautiful giant tree. It's from, um, we were offered to it from Dream Big and Union Bridge. They had used it for one year and decided they were no longer going to be using that and supporting that effort. So, they offered it to the town and, um, I had the opportunity to go down and look at it with our public works guy. It's a big metal frame with lots of big branches and they're gonna include lots of big ornaments and things that go on there. So, it's gonna be quite impressive in the park. You know, in the past, we've gotten live Christmas trees and tried to get the biggest one we could and, you know, having a six or seven or eight.
Still only seven or eight feet tall, yeah.
Yeah, it's just, uh, it was great and they look nice, it's just not impressive. And I think this is going to be a really impressive addition to the park.
Just start to go cut it down, come on.
So, um, that's, and a bu- a bunch of these things, we talked about last time. I told you we were gonna be doing all these things and, um, so they're all completed now. We did complete the se- the seven segments of paving throughout town. So, you may have had the, uh, the pleasure to drive on some, some of the new alleys and roadways that were paved. They did a nice job for us there. We still have some of our highway user revenue money available that I think we're going to try to get some of the, um, manhole covers fixed around town. So, we can bring them up to the right level or lower them, so they're at the right level, so our plows don't hit them. We completed the improvements over at War Memorial Park. You may have seen the new pavers over there. Uh, Eclectic Motors finished the restoration of the cannons. They were in place prior to the Vietnam traveling memorial wall that was in town. So, that was a nice addition. Uh, the part, the memorial park next door was decorated nicely. It was kinda blocked off with, with, um, some barricades so that the people could come and, and see that. So, that was, uh, nice.
Who did the cannons?
Uh, Eclectic Motors.
Oh, they actually did it?
They did the restoration of the cannons. I know they sent the wheels out to a guy that actually makes wooden wheels and, and had that done. And then they wrapped it with the, with the metal, the, the wheels, but they did the, the cannons themselves.
For the pa- the, the stone pavers that are there now as opposed to the crush it was there before?
We, um, had that done by, um, the same contractor, and it slipped my mind right now, that did the work up here in Fountain Park. And also did the walls behind, um, the pavilion over in Memorial Park, you know.
Douglas? I, I didn't, I didn't know if it was town staff or not.
Landscape, thank you, yeah. Yeah, they did a great job for us there. We're real, real pleased with, with what they've done, so it was a great job. And the sidewalk, you know, we had talked about last time up at Fountain Park and they said, you know, they're supposed to replace that sidewalk before Music on the Main. And lo and behold, they did and it was done and they did a nice job on that too. So, that was, uh, we got rid of the uneven bricks and got the new sidewalk in, um, before our, our town event. So, that was great. Uh, one other thing I wanted to bring up, the two-eleven High Street renovation next door. Last month or so, we met with the three interested contractors, um, we being the town and the fire department. Kind of maybe gave them a little more explanation of the project and what we were, you know, thinking and what we wanted to do and all those kind of things. And, um, the bids were due and came back in and no one bid on the project. We did hear from the, the contractors though and they, two, one of them, the, the scope of work was outside of what they wanted to do. The two other ones, uh, one felt that maybe there, there was not enough, uh, final information for them to accurately bid. And they thought there would be too many, um, work orders that would come in and raise the price. And so, they wanted, you know, thought it wasn't in the town's best interest. The other, um, the other contractor, he actually had a ton of information. And one of his big concerns was the lead paint over there and, you know, it has to be zero over zero, so no lead paint, uh, if we're gonna have tenants in over there. And so, he had a lot of concerns about that. But he actually said, you know, we sharpened our pencils and we came up with a number. We're not bidding, but we have a number and he shared that with us. And it's, it's really in line with the two grants that we have. So, we do have a grant for like two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars. We put in another grant for six-hundred-and-forty thou- or six-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars. So, we have like seven-hundred thousand dollars and he was a hair below that. So, that was a good thing because we feel like, you know, we have the money to do the job. And we are not as concerned, we were not as concerned about the lead paint because that, that building is going to be gutted totally. They were worried about windows and stuff. I believe that none of the windows in that building are original anymore. They're already been replaced a while ago. So, they're vinyl windows, so they won't have the lead in them. They probably need replaced again, but they don't have the lead in them to worry about. And maybe some of the facade might, but if it was encasedulated, you know, it's gonna be painted, it's not within, you know, where windows are gonna be used and that kind of stuff. So, we can probably get there. I know Mayor Cornick, uh, we, we talked about that a little bit and we were gonna have another lead, a person that does lead paint come in and give us the scoop on that. And I think Mayor Cornick may have been meeting with him this week. So, after that meeting, we're planning on getting back together with the fire department, um, and really see how we, we move forward with our next step. You know, we haven't heard about that second grant yet to see if we got the full money. But if we do get that full money, um, I think, you know, we'll be able to go back to these contractors and say, okay, here's where we are with the lead. And here's where we are with the money and maybe we'll be able to, to move it forward. So, it wasn't, it was unfortunate, no one bid, but it, I don't think it's the end of the world right now, yeah, so.
Anticipated issues with asbestos?
We don't believe that there's an asbestos issue over there again because there may be, you know, some asbestos towels that were been up in the ceiling or something, you know, throughout the years. But it's all being, it's, it's gonna be gutted. So, even if we had to do some remediation, you know, with, with letter asbestos, we could get that out of the way and then it would be gone and done. So, it's, it's not like we're planning on leaving anything in there. It's gonna really be a shell when, when they start building back out, so. That was it.
Thanks.
You're welcome.
Javier? Good eve- good evening, everyone. First item that I, I have several items. First one is I brought everyone an updated, um, packet of the maps. We did, uh, I understand my colleague, Ms. Claire Stewart, last meeting brought you each one packet, but we went back, reviewed them. And basically that, we did several changes when it came, when it came to the wording and the labeling and the legend, so that there's consistency across all the maps. Those are, tho- those are pretty much the changes that we have, so I will be providing each one of you a packet. I am aware and I do understand that there's a property that we're still pending from your behalf, the designated land use. I understand it's a property that's being, um, included in the GAB. I think it's the Hoff or Herf property.
There was two components. One was, uh, adding the Hoff to our GAB and then removing Snyder.
So, for the Hoff property? Yeah, for the Hoff property, we need, we, we're still pending the D L U. So, once we hear back from you, we'll go ahead and include it in the map. But right now, if you look at it, there's no deal you assigned to it.
We wanna have those in there because my understanding, the way this works is we, we've already voted on that here to make the changes to the growth area boundary. Then, once the, uh, we submit this comprehensive plan to the town council, they will then make a decision on accepting the plan or adjusting anything. But our recommendation includes the Hoff property in the GAB and the removal of the Snyder portion.
And it's reflected in the maps?
Yes.
Yeah, you, you need a designation for that?
Yeah, right now, we don't have a D L U for that property.
Or I guess a designation, whether.
Yeah, designation.
You know, commercial or?
Commercial, agricultural, residential.
It's planned residential.
So, it's, it's residential, what's today, it's agricultural, right? And.
Their plan for it to be residential.
Yes, their plan is to go residential, but I don't remember what it was.
Well, it was, oh, that's right, 'cause it's county zoning.
Yes.
Different than ours.
Right, so they were, they ultimately wanted to be our three-point-five, I believe, to give them the density that will allow them to get state priority funding. However, I think, why am I thinking it's our three?
Because that's what they said.
Okay, that's what we suggested and they wanna come back. So, do you have to put a?
Just let us know once what the designation, because right now, as it stands, there's no D L U for this property. So, once you confirm that, confirm what designated land use the town wants to go, move forward with, we can include it. But right now, as it stands, we don't have one.
I, I know when I talked with Gary about this, well, I mentioned that three, three-point-five that they wanted us to go to.
I'm sure the math's wrong you.
I believe the three, and I think the county that calls it are thirty thousand, is that what it is? They, they have, they have a dis- a little different designation than we do.
Thank you.
Oh, I see, I hate to waste your paper. So, this area on, on the.
So, it, they have it, they have it as agriculture right now, which is, which is what it is. And that's what we brought into the growth area boundary.
Included in the growth boundary now.
We don't have to do anything other than that. They have to come to the town and petition if there's some R value that we don't want. So, this is okay the way it is right now. If you look at map, at least the map, uh.
So, once you have an update when it comes to that designation, just let us know and we'll include it in, in the map.
Right.
There's not gonna be anything changed by the time we submit the comprehensive plan.
No, no. By the time we submit, it's gonna look like this. If and when, if and when down the road, the Hoffs.
So, it'd be agriculture for right now. That's the way it is now.
Yeah, the existing town, it's gonna stay agriculture.
All we did was included in our growth area boundary.
Which we did.
Which we did. If the Hoffs do some, want to do something different, like petition for annexation and the different zoning that they want, then they have to do that. And that's, that happens down the road.
I'm, I'm looking at the very first map. They aren't numbered, so we gotta go back to that because they were numbered before. And we're, throughout our plan, we're referencing those numbers. So, we'll, we'll, we'll need to have these numbered like we had before.
Map one, map two, whatever.
Yeah, I believe it was thirteen.
Right.
And so, the, you mentioned the numbers for the R-one, R-two, back to it?
Yep, the ones you had before?
No, no, no.
What, what did I say?
Actually, each of these individual maps had a number on them.
Oh, okay.
So, we'll want to keep that. But I'm looking at this one that's on top, the land use designations. And I'm seeing this area on the lower left, I see the growth area boundary. It's Hollowell to the right, Greenwood Church Road to the left. I'm assuming that's the property we're talking about.
Correct, yep.
And. Why would that not be our three?
Because it's agricultural today, right?
We haven't approved any of the, 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 the only thing, the only thing we voted on was just to include it in the boundary area.
We did not approve or vote or even discuss any type of land zoning for that. All we did was brought in the farm, the two-hundred acres, whatever it is of agriculture into our growth area boundary, hence the outline connected to our, our town. That's all we did.
Which enables them to be able to come back at some point with what their future plan is.
It becomes a future annexation area if you keep looking down the maps.
But I'm, I'm, but on this one, since I know that's kind of a key when the land use designation went, that's the only spot that's black. And I'm, and then, and we maybe should, maybe have like slashes or something on there?
It's the only part that's.
Right, it's, it's, it's blank, there's no coloring to it. It's, it's not conservation, it's not our one, two, three.
It says over on the right-hand side in the legend, it's growth area.
Yes.
But that, that's a ramp, no, it's not. It's that whole area, the, the growth area boundary is that red line going all the way around.
Right.
Right, but that Hoff property has no coloring or designation. Should, I think should have something.
The fourth map has your zoning designations.
Yeah, right, but if this one, on this land use designations.
So, it shouldn't it say agriculture since that's currently what it's designated? I understand what you're saying. There's nothing there and it's, you think it's, where all the other ones have shading, green, red, light brown, yellow, purple. There's no other areas within the growth area boundary that has no shading whatsoever. It's just all white.
It's not.
And so, you think it should be identified? It's not designated.
Is that issue designated land use? Is that a New Windsor determination of these categories or is that a county? Yeah, well, New Windsor land use, I'm sorry, there's the heading.
Yeah, New Windsor.
So, we don't have a designated land use of agricultural in the GAB. It's one of these other ten. So, I'm thinking. We somehow need to designate that area with something.
Says we need our lawyer. Cause I understand exactly what you're saying. If you look further down, it does show on other maps. What it is, but it, but it needs to be called something on this.
Or agricultural within our, no.
Do we need to create something for that specifically? You think we should just zone it?
Well, I, I, I think we, we just have injected a whole new element that the county has gone and I guess we're, we're gonna need to take a look at this. You wanna maybe tell us the changes that you've done on these because that's kind of.
That, that's the only change.
That's the only change?
That's the only change, yeah, because the rest is just, is just consistency. Um, if you, I don't know if you have the previous packet of maps that we provided you, but, um, you have, for example, the, in the legend, for example, growth area. You had a different symbology depending on the map. So, now it's standard across all the maps, like the thick red line, some wording, we have some typos. Also, we had a rebranding of the, of the department. Now, it, now we go by the Department of Planning and Land Management. But if you notice, on the old maps, we put Department of Planning.
Does anybody have the ones that we, that Abigail gave us that we've been working off of?
I've got the one from last week, our last meeting.
That's not from Abigail, that's, that's, looks like that's following what Javier has done. I don't have one with me.
I don't think I have one from that.
I think I gave mine.
Oh, you know.
I think I gave them to you.
The new one, aren't you?
I know a way to find out.
Talk about these on the back of our, your?
Yeah, what I had, I gave to you, uh. Wait a second.
Mark, did you copy Abigail's when you gave us that one? That?
No.
They have maps in there, I don't know which.
But that's okay, I have the.
It's that you have, right, Colin?
Yeah, that's my, Abigail.
Yeah, there we go, okay.
Okay, yep.
So.
In order.
Well, that's okay, what I was trying to see about the numbering on these things.
Yeah, if you can show me, that'll be great, so a way I can incorporate that.
One, the, okay.
There's a block on all of them that says map one, map two, map three. It's like this.
Let me see, so I can make sure we incorporate that here.
Yes.
It out within the document.
Map one, map two. Map one, looks like map three, whatever each, whatever each one.
And as from my records, we have thirteen maps, so, okay, so.
Let's see. I show fourteen, I do two, I show fourteen.
We, we excluded one. I'm sorry, no, there was a numbering problem. You'll see that, I think it was twelve.
Yep.
Christopher, you're right, twelve was missing.
Was missing.
We just, we did, this was in, these were put together by Abby.
What is thirteen then? It went from eleven to thirteen, fourteen.
This is progress because my understanding is that when we submit this plan, we want this growth area boundary to reflect that piece of property. But, um, in terms of the land use and how that rolls forward, we have to get assistance on how that gets addressed. Okay. Well, I got, I did get an email from Michelle saying she would not be at this meeting, but she would, her first foray into public meetings will be the town council meeting.
Okay, that's next Monday.
Yes, so you will see her and then, and I did remind her that it's a date change because she may not have caught that. And I'm, I'm gonna be at that meeting also, so I'll, I'll, I'll say something to her about, not only about this, but see if she'll, make sure she's at our next meeting. I'll go pick her up. But she's doing well, by the way. I guess I should've added that at the beginning. I'm very jealous that she's doing so well. Okay.
I also wanna mention that, um, I spoke with Ms. Claire Stewart and if you are interested in, you can email me a copy of the draft, current draft that you have. So, we can review chapter by chapter just to make sure that, um, all the required elements are, are included in, in the draft. So, we'll be more than willing to review what you've been working on right now and provide any feedback that, that might be beneficial. So, if you can't email us.
You don't have a copy?
I don't have a draft right, the most current draft, no, I don't have that one.
Yes, I will send you a copy of most current draft. If you could just, well, we'll, we'll, we'll talk afterwards. Yeah, I did, I, I wanna chat with Claire. Well, I guess, what I most wanna chat about is the, and I know that you're still relatively new to us, you're only with us about six months. But that's why my understanding is of having somebody sitting in your chair to be going through this. And as I mentioned last Thursday, when we were at the commissioners, we have had at least five different people sitting in that chair while we've been doing this. So, the continuity may not necessarily be there. But as I also said to whoever the lady was next to me, we're expecting, um, we, we put a lot of time into this and we're, we're not gonna. We need, you need to be somewhat gentle because we've had somebody sitting there even though it's different. And, uh, we're not gonna go through and make significant changes to this plan. We do, we'll need to know what may be missing, but, uh, you know, we, we've had somebody sitting there throughout this for the last several years to help us. And if we're not going in a direction that there's something not needed or something, there's, you know, some law or something like that, that's kind of the role that you. You're, I know you're the top of the iceberg because you've had others below that, but. Yeah. Okey-dokey. What else you got for us?
Um, in the meantime, that's pretty much what I have right now. Again, any, any other items that you might need assistance with, uh, feel free to reach out. We're committed in helping you as much as possible, so the offer's there.
Thank you. And that's a good segue, uh, the next item I have on the agenda. Got a, an email, gosh, a couple of weeks ago, probably about a month ago, just after the last meeting that was held here. From Carroll County Planning and Zoning Commission. And they, they wanted, they requested that we come up and have a chat with them about how we're doing with the comprehensive plan. And one of the, they're doing that with each of the towns. And there were a couple of us that had not been up there, but they've hit six, they had hit six of the eight municipalities. So, Dave, Drew and I went up there last Thursday and we had a good half an hour talking with the commissioners. And. I, I don't know why, but I was, I was a little surprised that the commissioners, you know, were aware of some of the, the, the issues that we have in town. And that, um, there was one commissioner in particular who had a bit of a special interest in New Windsor in connection. And, um, the commissioners, I, I think, and we're seeing some of the, the comments from Javier. I think they were surprised that we were left to be out here kind of on our own and not having, you know, more assistance as we had had in the past. But as I said to the, 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 and I, I'm, her name's escaping me, who was the lady that was running that meeting?
Daphne.
Daphne.
Daphne there.
And her position title?
Bureau chief.
Bureau chief, okay. She was saying that, uh, you know, we, we, we will, you know, pitch in and help you as much as we can to get this done, which is a whole different attitude than we've had for the last couple of years. And the commissioners seemed, again, I think, surprised, is maybe too strong a word, but they were disappointed that we were kind of left out here to do this. So, um, and as I said to Daphne. So um, and as I said to Daphne, um, in front of them that, you know, need to be gentle with us because if there's something missing from this, uh, because they, we, I know part of the process is for the county to review this. That, you know, we, we haven't had somebody really been arm in arm with us going through this like we had in the past. I know you were here when we did it the last time. So um, the questions that they had, I thought, I thought it was kind of comical when we were talking about water. They did reinforce that they, it's not just us saying that there is issues uh, with, you know, water capacity. Um, and they asked us about the quarry. It was, is, is, is an option. And, and they, you know, had to put my hand on his shoulder so he didn't bounce up because of, you know, that, that's gonna be years down the line before we're really gonna be able to have a, you know, the, the, the results of, you know, a quarry that's, work that's finished and would be able to get water from that. And then there was a second item that I had. What was it? Oh, yeah, there seemed to be a uh, apparently this is a discussion that the commissioners have been having for a bit of time. At least two of the commissioners about the idea that, well, you know, we're, they're running into all the ag preservation because Carroll County has a significant amount of ag preservation in relation to other counties. And um, how that's somewhat boxing in some of our communities. And when I mentioned that we've talked about our plan and without any other direction guidance influence, you know, we're a small town field, there's not a whole lot of opportunities for expansion, annexation. And I mentioned because of all the ag preservation and of course the quarry, which everybody's aware of, and Mount New Windsor, which is appearing on the southern part of town, that came up.
It's a ski resort.
Yeah, there we go. So um, so there, there was a discussion that they just were kind of bouncing amongst themselves, you know, we, we really need to address this, that we just, in perpetuity, we can't take in some of this other lands for the communities. But that being said, that doesn't really change anything in the short term for us and our plan. So those were my couple of comments. Dave or Drew, did you have anything else you wanted to add?
No, just, they seem very receptive to our polite and.
Polite's a good word.
Yeah, it was a good opportunity for, for um, Mark to go through the um, you know, he had a, he had a good running agenda that we got to talk about a lot of things that, that we've been working on and where we're going and what we're doing and why we're doing it. And um, and it was good for them to hear that and um, you know, I got the, the feeling that, you know, they thought we were on track doing the right things and there was ample opportunities for more support from the, from the county and they, they did offer that support, so.
It was mentioned about this uh, this agreement between the county and the town and each of the towns has that agreement and that uh, that, that, that needs to be looked at for, from our perspective about being able to get, you know, support for this. So it should be a smoother ride the next time goes through, whatever group will go through this comprehensive plan. So it's your chance to re-up. Alrighty, okay. The comprehensive plan review. The notes that I saw is to pick up table fifteen. I think it was after table fifteen is what I saw.
Yep.
But I also saw on whoever was the scorekeeper. Was that you, Dave or Drew?
Drew did the uh, the typing. Kevin did the typing. Okay, Kevin did the typing.
And I was horrible. I, I just wanted to say that now. It was somebody in my body that did that. It wasn't really me.
I do notice, oh, it's not gonna work, I guess, go back. Um, well, yeah, I will. It was, it looks like you had a lot of discussion at the beginning of making some changes and then didn't see a whole lot after that. So I'll just, I'll just go down to table fifteen. It's not worth reashing. What I did see from the stride, uh, table fifteen, which is where the focal point of starting before after this, keep this in with a question mark. You had.
Yeah, I have removed with a question mark. Same thing, yeah.
Remove is what you had as a question mark. Not being here as part of the discussion, so I don't know.
Because the names are all not really valid. Universal Forest Products doesn't exist. It's now New Windsor. The thing was, a lot of these were gone.
Add, okay, well, anyway, let's say, I'm sorry, I was thinking of the table previous to this that I took off the town website. This one comes from Carroll County Department of Planning and Land Management. So we're getting this from the county. This is what they think of us in, in relation to.
This was in August of two thousand and six, though, is what this is from.
No. May two thousand and twenty, twenty twenty-five. Oh, okay. You're looking at the hard, yeah. You're looking at the hard copy. That's the problem. That's, you know, that was.
Yeah, we weren't looking at that.
When I made hard copies for everybody, I had not gone and put in the updated.
Okay.
Stuff in there.
So that's why.
Early in my retirement, uh, that I took that on to go in there and do that. So what's up there on the screen is um, look at this. And you know what? I can make that larger too for those.
So while you're, while you're updating that, my, my question would be for these two charts that are showing businesses, is that something we want to put in our plan? Or is it something that we want to call out in our plan with a pointer? Go to Carroll County Planning, wherever that, Carroll County Planning Department to see the current list. The, the list of New Windsor ones, go to the New Windsor website, find the current list of businesses. Because it seems to be that as soon as we wrap this thing, it's gonna be obsolete, right?
Sure.
Where there's someone's gonna open it.
Yep.
And I, I don't know. I mean, sometimes it's nice to see that, but I, 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 you know, the value of it, yeah, is questionable.
I, I will go back to, again, we're, we're, we're now having a discussion as citizen planners, what's the value one way or the other? It's preference, you know, and this was following what we did the last time.
Yeah, and I think part of it is, it's a printed copy and they're not gonna go from, if they're reading it, that link's gonna be nothing. If they have a hard copy of it, or if it's on a computer, they can click it and go to the link. That's. Well, I'm, I'm not even saying it has to be an active link, right? I think it, it would be great, but the link's break, as you know as well, and no one's gonna be updating our book. I'm just thinking that we should tell the people who are reading this, whether it's online or whether it's a hard copy, where you can find the list if you wanna, if you wanna find a list of businesses there. I, I don't, I don't know. Because I think the, the link is gonna be broke, you know, quickly. And the list is gonna be outdated quickly and we're not telling them where to go.
But that's, that's the same for almost any of the tables we have. That's why we have a date and where it came from. So if you want something more current, you can go there. For example, we had two thousand and six and that wasn't, you know, so we've got something more updated.
I just threw that out there. I'm not calling on the source either way. I just, that's just my, my thought. If we think there's value to have it with the source and it's outdated, it's outdated. So just give them a pointer and whatever y'all think.
I will add from having, and, and you would, you would definitely notice this, I'm going back to the previous table. Sorry, fourteen. Since you have the old version, two thousand and six, I'm gonna add the brick and mortar versus home base. You didn't have all the home base in, in the two thousand and six. And I, my guess is there, that's probably kind of hard to keep an eye on. I know one of them kind of got started within the last year or two, um, and I'm sure there are other ones. But um, it's kind of like taking the temperature. And it does have one here where this information came from and when. So, so that does give the perspective. If you're sitting here looking at this in two thousand and thirty, uh, you would expect to see something different. So makes no difference to me. I just.
Is any of this required by the state?
Is that a rhetorical question? Javier, would you know?
What I can do is I can, I can verify tomorrow because I don't have it with me, the annotated code and confirm if it's, if it's a requirement and get back to you.
Fair enough. Sure.
Bottom, you have, it's from, the source is from May two thousand and twenty-five.
Yeah.
Well, then that's not accurate either.
What, Carroll County Department of Planning and Land Management?
Cause there's a lot of businesses.
Again, this, this is what they have.
Been out for years. Jack's business has been out for years, you know.
Again, this is. I don't, I don't know. Munchausen's probably gone, right? So I don't, I don't know who. Yeah.
This is chapter ten, correct?
Correct, yes.
Table fourteen or fifteen? Table fifteen, okay.
Yeah. I'm not gonna go read that right now. Yeah. Okay. Well, how about if, for what it's worth, what ones do you know? I guess DP Smeltzer's just gone, right?
Bennett.
Whatever, that's located in Carroll County. Isn't there still a Bennett? Cause they started going.
Yeah, who's passed away. He already won an early.
Bennett, he was down at the bottom of the hill.
Yeah, but then, didn't he move somewhere else?
No, he passed. Yes.
Yes, but.
But after that, you have, Kevin's passed, then yes.
Okay.
Snodgrass, he's gone.
That is uh, some kind of war.
How about? Myers, is Doug, I mean, I don't, is Doug, or? But this Richard's business.
That's close.
I don't think he has it.
Munchausen's gone, right?
Yeah.
They're gone.
Well, the first, the first one's gone.
Yeah, R M Myers is gone.
Windsor Automotive's gone. J C Prin's gone. Bison's gone.
I can't go that fast, I'm sorry. Oh, New Windsor Automotive's gone? Oh, but isn't that, is that eclectic? Okay, so that's Eclectic Motors.
One, you know, one location, yes.
Is, is it Eclectic?
E C C.
Yeah.
No, it's actually got another name. That's still there, but it's a school.
But the B and B is longer in operation.
Windsor Carrier, Allison, that's, that's Belice.
That's Lone Star.
No, that's, that's pizza would be where Belice.
Lone Star Carrier.
Windsor Carrier, that's Lone Star, isn't it?
Right across from.
It used to be uh, the Walmart back.
I know, he wouldn't have known that.
Yeah, okay.
But by tracks. Right next to Rab's. So, so Adley Hall. No, but that's.
It's not a business though.
It's a, a church, church.
Oh, it is. It's, it's, okay.
Church.
It's not a thing.
It's sever. And best should be Belice.
Oh, it was one spelled Belice.
B E L I S.
L L I S A M O S.
Simo.
O I S I M O.
I M O.
So New Windsor Automotive is gone. It's not New Windsor in there either. That's Frankie.
Mark, um, for Bede's, I don't, I can't see, but it's double L. I don't know if you have one or two.
Yeah, two L's. Okay.
And this is Frankie's.
Yeah.
What's it called? Frankie and?
Frankies.
It's Frankies? There we go.
Okay.
Okay. Jack's still in business?
It sounds familiar, but I can't remember.
Well, it's a department store. Two guys.
Yeah, they, they were, they were pared down first. It started out as two guys.
It was, it used to be a department store in Baltimore. Ritchie Highway.
Yeah.
Thank you. I gotta go. Thank you guys.
Have a good trip.
Thank you.
Go ahead. Did you sign that thing? Did you sign it?
Called what? Adams now?
New Windsor, it's um, A C N. Yeah, A C N.
Oh, it's not a safe bank. It's, it's, of course, Cotterman's gone, right?
There's no bank at the end. That's just A C N B.
Well, it's a double bank.
But that's the last P S.
Okay. Bank, bank. Garbers is still there. Is that spelled right? Sounds like.
It should be an E.
E R S.
Okay.
There's a real estate guy now there. That's.
Oh, yeah, the young guy.
Yeah, I see. I don't know the name.
Windsor Construction?
Windsor Construction is gone.
Oh, he's not running there? No, he lives in West.
Windsor Construction is gone.
The guy up on Main?
If, if that sign you see up on Main, it's not his office or anything. That's just.
Advertisement.
That's his rental property, one of them, one of them.
He's not from, he's not from New Windsor.
He's a landlord.
I guess I shouldn't say that one too.
Okay.
Now, New Windsor family, that now.
Yep.
Does he go by?
I think it's still New Windsor Family.
Still New Windsor Family.
Do we know what the community real estate team is?
That wasn't Rachel, was it? Agger, Rachel Tapper.
No, she worked, she worked for somebody in Westminster.
What about uh, coffee places that are outside of town?
Savannas.
Savannas.
What is that?
Sunday morning at Savanna's.
Yeah, that's it. I don't know why this isn't fitting. I'll have to go back and get this. Okay. What else isn't on here? What else isn't one here?
But this is the, this is the list that should have came from the town.
No, this list came from the county.
No, well.
The one, the table before this came from the town.
Who am I calling here?
Yeah, the town ones.
You know?
Table fifteen was the town.
Yeah, I'm saying, certainly commercially zoned properties, is that different than town businesses? Does that make it, does that matter to anybody?
Yeah, well, these, these, this smaller table was the ones that were out in our employment campus, the, the campus out the road.
Yeah.
And these other, this long list was the ones that were all in town. That's the, the difference. This was our industrial area, out, out the road there. This little list. Now we're, we just changed along together.
Oh, so this table fifteen.
Fifteen was the outside town.
Fifteen, this one.
Well.
Sixteen is.
Not really, cause you know, New Windsor Auto is, it was here in town.
Well, that should.
Yes.
Right here in town. New Windsor Excavating.
Industrially zoned property.
See the difference? Now, well, he's got it, you have it commercially, but this was industrially zoned, and it's on table fifteen.
Essentially, like if they, like were.
Sixteen was the commercially zoned property.
That's all chop, it's still essentially, could be said it's commercial, correct?
I believe so, yes.
Yes.
This was difficult working with what I got.
Which is more of those, more of the center of revenue.
So, like. If I just have that disappear. Table fifteen. Now, we're sitting here having this discussion, but it's crossing. You know, like, except the. Of course, I don't see, there's something on it, yeah.
It's on those tables, wasn't it?
See, this is one of those areas I feel like I'm flying in a cloud, because I don't really have a opinion about whether this belongs in here or not. I don't have the knowledge.
I mean, if it's a requirement, obviously you need to get that in here. If it's, if it's not a requirement, that's a flip of the coin, right?
There's, yeah, I think there might be a point with both sides of it. Sound metal. For the next career that does this, like.
Yep.
You know, with these, they might do, but I remember.
I'm gonna just put a marker.
You want me to verify also table fourteen if it's required?
Yes. You know, let's see.
There's not, yeah, there's not at all.
Oh, okay.
Did we lose a table?
My note says Price was gonna check on this to see if we needed to have this.
Like, we had different, different table numbers.
Yeah.
So, did we lose a table somewhere? Is that why? Okay.
Yeah.
All right.
Initially, when we started this, there was a request for hard copy. When, when we started to do this review after Emily left. So, I gave everybody, some people want hard, cause I gave everybody got a hard copy. But the data had just gotten census data, started to become available. And then also after, then after we got started on this. Javier joined and he was able to get me some information. But when you got your hard copy prints, it had the old data.
Yeah, we never had.
Yeah. Never, I never gave you guys new ones, I think I actually did. And then there was a lot of head shaking and frowning when I said, how about if I just do another print and give all of this to you with the new ones? Say, well, we got, and rightfully so, you had your notes all in the other hard copy that I had given you, so. That's how we got to this, I should have reminded you of this last month. So.
Okay, but I'm saying in the hard copy you gave us, this particular chart, New Windsor Town Businesses, um, show up as table fifteen.
Yes, yes. I don't remember, but early on, there was something that was repetitive.
All right, cool.
So, yes.
All right.
Yep. So, for those keeping score, I'm the third scribe of this, if you recall, we started with the county, I'm sorry, uh, somebody from the state. Joe Griffiths had somebody on his staff was here, and then he came here to tell us essentially, no, we're not gonna do that anymore. And then we had Emily for a while, and that crashed and burned, and now you're stuck with me. So, I'm not going anywhere. So, um. No, we've beaten this to death. So. Javier's gonna check for us to see.
Table fourteen and fifteen, so far.
And when we leave here, I will send you. I'm not, I'm not on the internet here, I, I will send this, this latest version to you. And I, I, I know everybody won't necessarily like it, but I'm gonna send you also this version also, so you'll have the most recent. Or does everybody, would everybody like to have a hard copy?
So, I, yeah, I, I just saved it, one drive and then do it.
Okay. So, I will get a hard copy, I mean, a, a soft copy.
County have any requirements for ask for plans, other than what the.
Well.
State guidelines? You know?
Well, we're gonna be reviewing it, ask for, um, the statement, uh, annotated code.
Oh, okay, oh, I see.
See, the, when we did it the last time, we had somebody kind of guiding and leading us, and it knew what that was. So that, oh, well, you need to do this, you need to have this. Now, we're putting this together without that knowledge. And then theoretically, then somebody's gonna review and say, oh, here's what the code, oh, you gotta do this, you should have done this, or. So, that's, that's where the being gentle comes in, cause. It should be, okay. So, uh, fourteen and fifteen, I'm just putting a line through it for now. We will revisit whether that goes in here or not. And I'm actually gonna put a second line on this, because I think. We're going down a path with this one. But we'll wait and find out. Okay. So, let's see, those two tables. It's occurring conditions. So, we talked about the employment campus area, okay, I see the wording now. And we don't, didn't even address those, we just used the words of those. And I got a table of the town businesses, inventory and description of commercial areas. Yeah.
Do you have the info?
That's. This is what I got from the county, no, I don't have, I don't, didn't I get that, I got this.
But now, like, we're current conditions, that wording there, do we need? Change in that?
You did that last time.
Okay. Change, yeah, we also changed the businesses and stuff.
Yeah, I, I think that wording seems good, I think where we get off is these tables, whether we need to have them in here or not. And it could be, we could just not have the tables and just have the wordings that we have in here. Under neighborhood businesses.
If, you know, to have currently have eight parcels, well, I mean, the parcels and the land are still there, it's still, correct, it's still that.
Yeah.
Neighborhood business.
So, actually, table fifteen does go with this inventory and description of commercial areas. I guess it's this one with the New Windsor Town Businesses. Okay. Labor force unemployment. And your hard copy wouldn't. This table. And I took the twenty census, and what we had before was the nineteen ninety census compared to the two thousand. In this case, we've got the two thousand compared to the twenty twenty. Even though the last plan has, two thousand seven, and it was amended in twenty ten, was using twenty two thousand, excuse me, two thousand census data. And below that, then, I get into the wording that goes with that. If you wanna take a moment and read that.
What did it drop, compared to? Twenty twenty. That had nine twelve.
When you look at this, education, health, social services, the, these are the categories that, you know, the census grouping. I, I will add that I added this column, percentage change. Public administration was the big, big increase, if you will. And whatever wholesale trade is, and what that definition is, but you can see we had a big jump in that. Drop off in agriculture, forestry, fishing, hunting, mining, ten people down to three.
I think they're correct, sixty two percent.
Yep, that follows national.
Public administration is government employees?
That's what I would think.
Does that include the, uh, employees at the, um, public libraries? Is that included in that number? Does that include?
These are residents.
Oh, residents based on the census, right?
Yeah.
I guess the fishing is Dempsey. He's one of the three, I mean.
Mining drop, we're all retired. Well, that's all same.
So, if you're used to taking a look at numbers, you can look and see the changes and, yeah. I, I. I took this table as we had it before, and then I took the liberty of doing the highlighting. Employee, oh, you know what, now that I got this, it's a larger on the screen, it doesn't. Goodness. I'm just gonna get this down to the same page. Okay. That's a one twenty five, maybe we can have all of it together and everybody can see it. All right, so this was the next one in there, under the labor, employee persons by occupation. Same seven twenty. Those are the census categories, so. Let's see where we are here. This acreage of industrial, commercial uses and zoning. My note was the price was gonna provide that. So, we.
And that's old two thousand six.
Yep. Is that something you can help us with, Javier? This would be, boy, this is really got, be on page. Yeah, right at the table seventeen. Let's see, I'm gonna.
Table seventeen is the one you did, the next one?
I know, it's actually this right here, this, this section here. Based on the Cal- County zoning maps of two thousand six, sixty five acres of land are zoned industrial.
So, you want updated numbers there?
Yes, that would be great.
Can you put a little note like you're doing, like highlighted, updated data?
Yeah, I got on, I just put your name.
Thank you.
Now, is that, is that in, in the greater area of factory, or what's in our?
Based on the Carroll County zoning maps. What we have there. I'm gonna slide down here and see if one of these can help us.
Okay, is there?
No, this is, this is dollars. That's accessible tax base by land use. Yeah, I don't. Okay, so. Industrial and commercial tax base, yeah. What was the guidance for these categories, these tabs, these sections of that? I'm just following the cookbook of what we did last time, I. Residential development contributes the largest dollar amount to the county's revenues. And as you can see. Seventy seven percent. I said it's gonna, twenty twenty five, excuse me, seventy five percent, seventy six percent almost. Residential dollars. Agriculture is eleven percent. And industrial is thirteen. You can see, you've got every five years. The change, but residential consistently is three out of every four dollars accessible tax base is residential. Now, kind of your question, Drew, you know, it, it, we don't have, you know, we got agricultural here in, 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 in the town. I would think eleven percent, that sounds like almost a high number when we talk about the town. For what it's worth, it's, it, it's. It's whatever this really is, it's consistent. Essentially seventy-five percent residential over the six, two, seven periods, it's two, four, six periods. Agricultural is low teens and five to seven percent for industrial.
That's the way it was between ninety-seven and two thousand six as well.
You have a bump in the industrial, which I guess would that make it by Hoover? No, that would, that, maybe that's the agricultural, I don't know, what's industrial? I don't know. Yeah, you're right.
We'll have the manufacturing thing here. He was manufacturing, yeah.
Not twenty twenty-five. The double between from twenty twenty-five.
I don't actually do anything down the.
The motor company, Actelac?
Yeah, I'm not.
Oh, I don't know what that is.
Uh, uh, controls, industrial controls. They build industrial controls. I don't know, that would be. Yeah, that's, would be industrial, I would think.
Seventy million?
It's related to. No, yeah, industrial controls, I can see that useful. Now, it's related to water, sewer systems, what they do, yeah. Industrial controls are not inexpensive.
Okay. Okay, I'm just gonna move to the next cloud. Or mud puddle. Tax base in New Windsor, as well as countywide, has traditionally been heavily weighted towards residential land use. Primary economic goal of the ninety-seven plan was to increase the commercial and industrial tax base. You know, I, I can remember us having this discussion because we just, we'll just say the same thing, but. Well, no, I mean, no, I remember having this discussion twelve years ago. Do we want that in there now? Is that, I don't think so. Okay, I'm gonna strike that. What's creepy about this is theoretically, we've gone over all this already before with Emily. So I don't, I don't remember us having a discussion about this, but. Emily was somebody that, she came to town council meetings and, and expressed an interest in being, helping the town in some capacity or something. Um, and she volunteered to be the scribe to, to do what I'm doing right here. So we actually have already gone through this entire plan and then she hadn't, wasn't able to continue. So that's where we are picking the pieces.
My notes, we didn't scratch it up.
That, okay, oh, gosh, I'm sorry, I didn't.
I'll get my notes from when we went over this section.
Alright, good, you wanna leave me? What are, what are we taking out? That table?
The primary, no, 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 I'm talking about that sentence you just.
Okay. Yeah, that's gone. Primary economic, yeah, that's gone, okay. Yeah, I don't know. Overall, overall man of land zone with some type of commercial, industrial employment is increased. I, I don't know what that's based on, we don't.
I have that the employment campus is a hundred and twelve acres.
Wow.
I don't know where that came from or what, but.
There's definitely been a lot of work done in this area because this looks, this is looking different than what we had in the last plan. So it looks like she's done some. I don't know if it's freelancing because we would have discussions and she would take what she was hearing and, and kind of adjusting. So. Analysis, we're in the analysis that community needs, right? Yeah. Alright, what's a pleasure, you said it was a hundred and.
Well, I can't, I, I have nothing to, no source like that, I don't know. Well, I have that there, but.
I, I.
Hundred and twelve acres pointing to employment campus.
Yeah, but this is commercial, industrial or employment campus, so, yeah, that would be included theoretically in a one eighty-seven or the two oh eight. Alright. I am going to locate the. Tables. And I hope. There we go, okay. I believe we do have a table. Go to the index. It's right this way now. Is the maps? Tables. Cause I know we have zoning acreage. Which is twenty-seven and twenty-eight. Okay, there's four oh seven, we've had that. Commercial, industrial or employment campus. Industrial, commercial. There we go. Eighty for industrial. We don't have commercial in this. Well, there's a hundred and seven, which possibly could mean why the numbers change. Nope, it's only eighty-seven. Okay, now this isn't gonna help anybody sitting here flammering around. What's next? So actions. I'm going to send out this latest version. This, this version has the tables in it with census data. And let's just not do anything with this chapter ten tonight. And take a look at the chapter ten that we can go to next, and look at next month. Move on to chapter eleven. Because if it's, it's really would be the first time you're seeing these tables, it's kinda hard to look at this, especially while I'm scrolling around trying to find the others. Uh, I'll send the entire plan and I'll also, if you recall, I had, this, this is a Word document. And I have another Word document that I sent that has the index and that it has the list of tables. And that is, that, that's what I'm kind of keep scrolling back and forth on. Which is not an easy thing to sit there while somebody is doing that. Still no substitute for hard copy, I'm sorry, you can flip back and forth, but. But that's, that's what I'm gonna suggest for eleven, for the chapter ten. Chapter ten has census tables in here. There are also, all the other tables beforehand that we've had or updated, and I know you were looking at last month, they would have. Hard copy would have been the old ones, the electronics that I've sent have the new ones. I will send you out the most recent because I also have the most recent verbiage that we've changed. Okay. Going to chapter eleven. So it says all kind of notes here on this chapter ten, and we got down to recommendations from Emily here. Alright, chapter eleven, historical and cultural resources. Anybody have any notes on, on? I don't have anything at the beginning of this.
I don't need them, history is the history.
Yep.
The street tells us it's wrong.
Well. I'm saying that we, the site currently houses, it's not the Brother and Service Center. Springdale Prep. And that was something that we pointed out. So I think what we're, we, I, I, I think it's pretty safe to say ten is when we started to run, chapter ten is when we started to run into, uh. Losing Emily. Preparatory school, was that, is that the college? Springdale Preparatory School. That's where I'm from. Thank you. Uh-oh, I got a note here, Drew was. Yeah, what? But that's what I have with Drew, so I don't know with that. History is the history. Why is this such a mess? Nineteenth century. Okay, so the first section. Anybody have any notes on that, historical context? Historic contest, context? Right, what I'm talking, no, thanks, but your notes from, from when we went over this before. Anybody have anything that you, you had a note that needed to be changed?
Brother and Service, I made note that that is Springdale Preparatory Academy now?
Yeah, I did that one, yep, yep. That was kind of the only had note other than Drew's name. And I don't know, I, I can't see anything there, cause you weren't here in the eighteenth century, so.
Yes, he was.
He is an old soul.
Well, we used to come up and. I had an asterisk next to that virtually untouched, like, very long word too, paragraphs.
You know, it's funny, that's why I have Drew's name.
I did asterisk there, don't know why.
What was, uh, whole time peace in the world? I don't know, I don't think that.
What, what's that? What, what's that? Old time peace. So, we've got any notes, any word choice you want, that's? Saturday afternoons, in the early fall, there is no peace and tranquility is. Where?
Consider historic New Windsor?
There, yeah, already historic.
You're hired. This inventory of historic structures. Did not get an update. But would the historic structures change?
I would increase, I knew historic structures, but you never know.
So, I felt that was safe to second, we'll get rid of that, okay. Then, there is this. I do not recall why.
Yeah, I mean, we didn't
You liked to do this, but I kept it the same, these are all different. Historic preservation. Resources, yes. I did not have any note in there to take it out. Do we want to take it out?
Well, I mean, I, I, you know, I don't recall one as far as
I got Randolph offered to update the historic properties. Historical structures for us, but I don't know if that's, they're not?
That looks like a bigger list than what's in the old. In our original version. No, no, we just did it in two columns, never mind. We did it in two columns, that's all. We're doing it in one column here, in the, in, in the initial, we did it as a two column.
Yep.
So, that's what I looked for, never mind.
Mark, I don't know if those table, that, that table with all the historic preservation resources, um, I don't know that it's accurate for one thing anymore, you know, there's
The ones that I know of are, but I, you know, there's a long list that I don't want to
It's a long list, I'm, I'm not sure. You know, we, to, to leave it in, we would have to go through those, like the Maryland rehabilitation tax credit for vice twenty percent. Is, is, is that still the way it is, is that program in today's environment still there? We'd have to go look at each one of those and research it, and does it belong, I guess, does it belong in, in the New Windsor comprehensive claim? Would someone look for that information here? Nope, I, I kinda think this is not, it wouldn't.
Like, like number three, that's probably the acts.
See, my guess is with this one, Barb, that was something important with her. She would have known, Ralph Stopman, that, that's probably where all this came from. So, do I hear, strike this?
Strike it, I, I think so.
Motion to strike it from Kevin and a second by Dave Grayson, okay.
Now, would you let that paragraph go on the table, let that in? Cut off the last sentence?
Yeah, you'd have to take that last sentence out.
We say are available on the county's website.
Oh, I don't know, you're gonna find these on the county website. I can say, you reach out to Barb Lilly. She retired somewhere, is what last thing I heard. Yeah. Clearly, that's, somebody had some expertise. That would be my bet. Okay. Okay, I think I know what to do. Alright. Heritage tourism. No, just back when we were doing this, this was that end of the Civil War.
The Civil War Trail.
Yeah, the Civil War Trail.
Yeah.
Oh, there it is, the heart of the Civil.
When their tablet was something that had something related to
I, I mean, I've seen them in other towns, we don't have one.
I thought we did.
It's an array then.
No, there, there isn't one. There isn't one. The Heritage Committee has been talking about getting some, either contributing money for that or getting something from the state. Because there was a time period we were talking about this, I don't know if it was here, because of my early days in town about this. All the communities, because of the Civil War Trail, was, there, there was money in the state for that. There, it's right there, along with it, certified Maryland Heritage Area's authority in July twenty, two thousand and six. Yeah, so.
Is this still a thing doing now?
Don't know.
I would imagine that's beginning in the fall of two thousand and six.
That was right when we were hot and heavy into this. I have a note here under this paragraph, certification enables, that price said, that's out. Anybody else see anything on that now? There's target investment zones.
Yes, I have that as go on, that whole paragraph.
Yeah. Alright. Blame it on Kevin.
And I also have that New Windsor is designated as a Maryland's part of the Civil War Heritage Area.
Yes.
I have to change that.
You got that couple of them up in Westminster. Were you there, Drew? Were you there? Neil, Neil was. What's the preference, we strike this, or?
Well, yeah, I would get rid of the certification part.
It's gone.
Okay, and then I would say, so, I would say New Windsor is designated Maryland's hardest Civil War Heritage Area.
I heard remove, what do you want removed? Does anybody know Carroll County did receive designation, fortunately, because that doesn't make sense. Similar national effort underway beginning in the fall of two thousand and six.
State Roads Commission would kinda
Yeah, I figured that's what you were doing.
I think this is I think this, nearly all the designations should all go. I think both, I think that last paragraph should go. A similar national effort underway beginning may designate this. So, New Windsor has received designation. It was received, was certified in July twenty-sixth, or two thousand and six. Okay, so this is all kinda stating something, we're just not going to unstate it. Okay, anybody have any notes on the community needs? Yeah, I do too, and before that, I have a highlighted note to include something about Frank's book the, uh, video. What's the time, what is it? Has everybody read that? Times passage in there?
Times Crossroads.
Times Crossroads, so everybody have you read it, Drew? Yeah, have you read it, Kevin? Oh. Stop up at the Heritage Committee, you know, at, at the museum. It's a Emmy award-winning video about New Windsor. Former resident
Times Crossroads.
Times Crossroads by Frank Badwick. Who has slept at three oh two High Street many times. He was there like twelve years or so, like that, yeah. He's down in Charlestown now. Wow. Yeah, he's down in Charlestown now. Frank Junior followed that, he's, he's, he's the director of MPT. Yeah. So, um does anybody else have that note? I have a, so the quality of life, sense of place of communicate. Toolkit of many strategies.
Crossroads.
Yeah.
I don't tell one more.
It is?
And then after Crossroads, it's colon the history of
I guess Emmy's capital. Are town officials still interested in developing a pattern book?
So, yeah, that's the whole thing, I don't think we were personally. Actually, that was all crossed out.
Oh, okay.
It's all about the pattern book. Because I don't think we are interested in developing in town, how it'll look.
I have towns develop guidelines as part of land use. That's why I have it all crossed out.
I didn't have, I didn't write down what you said, but it sounds like that's what I was crossing everything out together.
Oh, she was a house master. They looked up around, uh, Papertown or a bit of Washington.
End here. Seven twenty five.
Mark, is this the copy you're gonna be emailing?
Yes, yes, yep, yep, absolutely, yep.
Here you got a line with all the notes marked up on it and just, you know. This thing has been through so many changes.
Let's see. It gets up to seventy eight, we still got twenty pages to go.
Mark, just to, just to clarify, so from my side, on chapter ten, I have three items confirmed. If table fourteen and fifteen are required.
One section in there.
Table seventeen also on chapter ten?
Uh, let's see. No.
No?
No. Okay, so good.
Fourteen and fifteen.
Yeah, fourteen, fifteen, and then there.
Item that I have in the area.
It was just after seventeen, there was a section about acreage.
If acres of industrial commercial uses, you need updated data, because you're using two thousand six, correct?
Yep, exactly. So. Our next meeting is the Monday before Thanksgiving. The following meeting is the Monday before Christmas. So it's the twenty fourth of November and the twenty second of December. Normally, we don't meet both of those because of, I don't know how it evolves, we usually miss one, but how does that look for everybody, we still, I think if we had two more meetings. I think within two meetings, we can finish this. We can get it to a point of. And, uh, before I do anything with this, when I go home tonight, I will send this latest version to everybody. Looks like, uh, we, I just wanted to move that up here. Say where we stopped off. Around page seventy eight is what I recall. If you wanna make a note. I've got it noted in here. Eight seventy nine actually is where we stopped. Yep. And it's like a hundred and two, a hundred and three. All right, um. So for the twenty fourth, was that? For what you know right now, you think you'll be here, I mean, that Christmas and Thanksgiving often are travel times, but I don't think. You think you'll be here, Drew?
Yes, twenty fourth, yes.
Twenty fourth, and then we can chat then whether we're gonna meet Christmas week or not, but that's, that also is the next one after that. Also, on your calendars, please, Mark. We don't often have a, a, a high turnout from this group, but it's one of the, you know, opportunities to get a little bit of, uh, kudos from the, the town is that the thirteenth of December at nine o'clock at Saint Paul is a, is the town breakfast. And we will not have Neil's trivia.
Why not, is, is Kevin gonna come up with new trivia?
Kevin's gonna have to work up something, we're, 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 we have to go on a retreat to plan that, so.
I like that.
Yeah, and, and eight days.
What's the time on that breakfast?
It's at nine o'clock at Saint Paul. About two hours. Yeah, it's an Hawaii retreat, we have to go on retreat to Hawaii.
We weren't invited, though.
I was gonna say, I wanna be part of that brain trust.
Thirty five hundred dollars.
I'd let the council spend that on me.
He's able to afford it because of the free water that people. Recording, this is all just humor.
Be careful.
Water.
Or free trip to Hawaii.